Yesterday, kind of as a guide for our principals, is very similar to forethought suggestions. Dr. Ferguson and Ms. Nichols I met yesterday and kind of discussed through what I have here, and this is in conjunction with several other districts around the state. And I'm just going to kind of go over this with you under requirements for application. One, homeschool students are not eligible for co-curricular activities. The law specifically says that a student in an approved home study program shall try out and apply for extracurricular activities or interscholastic activities. So in our definition of co-curricular activities, we're talking about choir, band, courses where you traditionally get a grade, and you would go have coursework and traditionally get a grade by going to class. Number two, application must be made within the first 11 days of the semester. This is an LHSAA rule, an LHSAA 1.31 in their handbook. And after talking to legal counsel in some of the other districts, we felt like we would put this in there and just be consistent. So any homeschool student who was requesting application even to a club would have to do so in the first 11 days of the semester, just like a student would do if he had to do so or if he was wanting to try out for an LHSAA sanctioned event. We just thought consistency would be the best avenue there. Now, you may say, where 11 days came from? Well, I really don't know where 11 days came from, and why they set it on 11 and not 10 or 15 or 20. But this is a rule that the LHSAA has in place to keep a student, let's say they're playing at school A, and school A is not doing too well, in week eight or nine of the season, they decide to jump to school B who's doing very well, and they may be an outstanding athlete, and they can jump over and be eligible immediately. So if they do not move within 11 days, or not there at the school within the first 11 days of the semester, they are ineligible to compete for the first 30 days after enrolling at a subsequent school. So this is just to keep kids from jumping from sport to sport, coaches from recruiting late in the season, picking up a need that they may have based on an injury. I know that may be shocking to some, but it happens. So that's where the 11 days came from. So our thinking was we would be consistent across the board, even with a homeschool student that was requesting to be a member of a club. All fee, number three, all fees required by the club or the athletic team will apply if applicable. Participation only applies to activities outside of the instructional day by reporting the location and time set forth by the school principal. So our suggestion would be that these homeschool students only come outside the instructional day. They are not students on our campuses. We cannot enroll them with the state. We do not get MFP money for them. We cannot give them a grade. So we felt like it should be after school, an after-school activity, like an athletic team or a club after school. Five, and is just what any student would have to produce because the law says that the student has to attend, a homeschool student would have to attend the school that they're zoned for. So we felt like we would follow the same process to check that by providing two proofs of address to the CWA office like we would for any other student. Submit a copy of the student's LDOE approval for admittance into the LDOE-approved home study program. The law specifically says it has to come from an approved homeschool program, so we felt like they should give us that documentation. Seven, submit the most recent official transcript of the student applying for participation. This is another requirement by the LHSAA to check for grades, so we felt like a student transcript was something that should be obtained. Number eight is directly out of the LHSAA Eligibility Handbook section. I'm not going to just read through all that, but that comes directly out of there. Number nine, any homeschool student accepted into a club must meet and adhere to all requirements of that club unless otherwise noted in this document. And 10, any homeschool student accepted and approved to participate in a club or interscholastic athletic team must obtain supplemental insurance as provided by OPSB, or the parent waiver to opt out must be signed and completed. That is no different from any other student that we have in our district. And then the next page is just a statement that we would ask the student and parental parent or guardian to sign that basically says they will follow the stipulations, and then any disciplinary issue that arrives, they could be removed immediately from the club or the athletic team. Because remember, these are not our students. They can't be put in detention. They cannot be suspended because they are not our students. So this form, and Mr. Thompson, who's parish AD, also and I discussed it today, and Dr. Ferguson and Ms. Nichols yesterday, I really think the forethought policy probably covers things well. This would just be our document, the first two pages, to use for any homeschool student applying for the ability to participate in a club or an athletic team complete. So that's the long of it, I guess, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that would be my recommendation.
I had just had one question. On the 11 days, that's per semester, so if a kid moved over Christmas holidays...
Be the first 11 days of the second semester.
Second semester, and then they could play immediately second semester?
If they made the team and were accepted, yes. The law does not give any guidance to how they should make the team, if they have to make the team. I mean, I would think that if anybody came and they deserved to make the team, they had that ability, then they would be kept on the team. But the law gives no guidance in that. It's not if you apply or you try out, you're automatically on the team. And that wouldn't be any different than any of our students that had to try out for a team. So anyway, any other question?
Any discussion from the committee?
Mr. Geis, does this include transportation to and from events?
No. Well, if they've made an athletic team, yes, we would transport them. Regina has checked on our insurance. It feels like our insurance would cover. That was one of my first questions. Is our insurance, liability insurance, going to cover a student that is not officially enrolled in our district? So Regina, do you still feel good about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments?
That's good. Did you check with Elmer as well?
Yes. Hammond and Sales has been involved in this throughout the state.
How many students do you think this would affect?
We have had one request so far for, to join a ROTC unit in the parish. And ROTC, actually by federal law enacted in 2020, already required us to allow homeschool students to participate.
And these students would have, even though they would come after the regular school day?
They would get to be involved in any activities after school, which our ROTC units...
And they would have to abide by any of our rules and regulations set by Washtau Parish schools.
That's right. That's what I put in that statement on the second page.
So far, just one.
Just one what?
Has applied.
Just one so far that I'm aware of. That's all I've heard of.
Hi, any other discussion? All right. Do we have any cards, Angela?
No.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion and a second to approve recommended changes?
I move to accept the recommended changes.
Thank you, Ms. Biggs.
Second.
Mr. Hackler with a second. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next three policies that we're going to review together are Policies JD, Discipline, Policy JDD, Suspension, and Policy JDE, Expulsion. Dr. Ferguson?
Okay, again, as Ms. Nichols said, these are based on acts or laws passed by the legislator. These are Acts 400 and Act 337. And this is a pretty lengthy packet, so pardon me as I read to you. On the first page on discipline, it states that no principal or administrator shall prohibit or discourage a teacher from taking disciplinary action, recommending disciplinary action, or completing a form to initiate disciplinary action. There should be no retaliation on that teacher for filling out a discipline form. That's the main difference in the discipline policy. Also, if you'll turn over to page four, I just want to call your attention under the first paragraph for student removal from the classroom. It said the teacher shall, that's a word change, a verb, the teacher shall have the student immediately removed from his or her classroom and placed in the custody of a principal or designee. The next paragraph, and I've already talked with Mr. Lloyd, he is going to make sure that the principals are aware of this at their meeting next week about the removal from class and how long an elementary student may be removed from class versus how long a middle school or high school student can be removed. And that's in the second paragraph on page four. On page five, after the student's third removal, a conference must be held. It is required. Again, that's a verb change. Also, on page six, when it comes to parent conferences, if the parent or legal guardian refuses to attend, a principal can, in accordance with statutory provisions, file a complaint exercising juvenile jurisdiction if the parent refuses to come to this type of conference. That's the first policy on discipline. Then if you'll turn to the suspension policy, on page two, it talks about the secondary suspension. And this deals with the two policies that the board approved last month regarding students' health, behavioral, mental health. After the second suspension, the principal or principal's designee shall consult with the student and determine if the behavior is related to behavioral or emotional challenges. And if so, they should schedule a conference with the parent, explain their findings, and recommend other resources or help for that parent. That goes back to the policies that were approved again last month. Going on down, page two, it talks about recommendations, and one of the main changes is it's no longer by age in the suspension and expulsion, it's now strictly by grade, basically elementary through grade five, and then secondary six through 12. If you look at the bottom of page three, it talks about mandatory suspensions, obviously firearms, knives, and other dangerous instruments or drugs. At the top of page four, it says a principal or designee shall immediately recommend the student's expulsion to the superintendent for those offenses in grades six through 12. So basically drugs, you know, drugs, knives, drugs, alcohol, not alcohol, drugs, knives, and firearms, automatic recommended suspension. That's the suspension policy. And then the expulsion policy is the third policy, JDE. A student who is suspended for longer than 10 days or expelled shall be provided with academic instruction or an alternative setting. That's on page one, paragraph three. On page two, again, the change is no longer by age but by grade. On page three, additional reasons for expulsion, and those are numbered. The second one, a principal may recommend expulsion in grades pre-K through five if they possess a knife, and it gives the recommendations for the length of the knife. Number three, grades six through 12 can be recommended for expulsion for tobacco, alcohol, or vaping, that addresses your question, may be recommended. And then at the very bottom, number four, a student in grades six through 12 who is suspended a third time shall be recommended for expulsion. And I believe that's what we do already now. Mr. Fremont can probably attest to that. After the third suspension, they're recommended for expulsion. So again, a lot of this is just changing the shalls to may or mayes to shalls, and also changing the age. It's no longer age requirement, but strictly by grade. And again, Mr. Lloyd will be going over all of this with the principals next Wednesday in his meeting at CWA.
Just to follow up on that, like Dr. Ferguson said, Mr. Lloyd has a full day planned. He and Mr. Fremont with our principals next week for this and several other things. We're certainly not opposed to tightening these things up. There's some other things we have concerns with, with how this affects our school performance scores, but I know they're working on that as well. But anyway, the big changes here to me are the conference for principals, and Jane Charles can certainly comment on that, but it just, after three discipline incidents, there's a mandatory parent conference, which I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think that's good. It's just could possibly add more. And then the recommendation for an expulsion is now mandatory after three suspensions instead of four. A principal still has a right at any time to recommend an expulsion for any offense, but once you get to three suspensions, it becomes mandatory to make that recommendation as child welfare in attendance instead of after four. So those, other than like Dr. Ferguson said, a lot of verbiage change from will or may to shall, but those are two of the big things that stand out to me.
And the elementary recommendation expulsion is after the fourth offense? Is that right? Did I read that right?
On the fourth.
On the fourth? Yeah, okay.
But like it says, you can earlier than that, yes.
Yeah.
Just a requirement on the fourth.
Yeah.
And all of these, all of these acts are sent directly to the state now?
All of what, Remco?
If a child has an infraction, must...
It goes, we've been having to enter it into the state system where they can pull those. So that's how, for our accountability system, we get deemed for suspensions and expulsions in our school performance and district performance scores.
I'm sorry, say it again. We get what now?
We get hit negatively for the number of suspensions and expulsions that we have. I did get some communication yesterday that there may be some changes to that as far as how that will be factored into our school performance scores, but that has to come through Washington, and that is not approved yet. But to answer your initial question, Ms. Biggs, Mr. Wright, their staff, when they enter a discipline, it goes into the state system. The state has access to those records.
I'm going to have some problems with this for right now. I'm just going to take a little more, I like to take a little more time.
Well, according to these acts, they go into effect August the first.
Yeah, it's state law. There's not much...
There's not a whole lot we can do about it.
We can make them more difficult, but we can't back off of them.
More difficult?
We make them more difficult. If the board wanted to say automatic recommendation for expulsion after second suspension, but can't make them back off.
Yeah, I received something from the state legislature yesterday and the senators a few days ago concerning this. I wanted to meet with them, but didn't have, they have not been available, so anyway.
So do we need to add this verbiage to our own handbook?
Yes.
Can we link it to the, okay.
Yes. This is state law, like Dr. Ferguson said, effective August first.
Okay.
As of today?
Today.
Yeah, as of today?
Happy August.
You have some districts that are already in school.
As of today.
Right.
Hi, any other discussion? Do we have any cards?
No cards.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the recommended changes?
I saw move that we approve the recommended changes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next policy that we're reviewing is Policy JCDAE, and it is student use of cell phones and other electronic telecommunications devices. Dr. Ferguson?
Good news is, this is one of those areas that we were very proactive about, and we have already addressed. So basically, the policy says that the cell phones have to be turned off during the school day, so we have already addressed that. Again, forethought made the recommendation that the consequences for cell phone not be included in the policy, but be included in your discipline manual, which is exactly what we have already done. The only other new part of this policy is an exception if the electronic device is part of the student's IAP, IEP, individual health plan, something like that. That's the only other new recommendation, that that is an exception to the rule if the electronic device is needed for that student.
And we do have several diabetics that have to have their phone to monitor their sugar.
Thank you, absolutely.
Is the bus included?
I'm assuming that's part of the school.
The bus should be included, it's part of the school.
Okay, any other discussion from the committee?
Just one thought, because when I was at Richwood, a lot of times the left hand didn't know, not because of the principal, what the right hand was doing. And I would hope that those students who are allowed to use their cell phone for medical reasons, that everybody who needs to know will know. everybody who needs to know will know.
For medical reasons, though, Remicko, we wouldn't be allowed to share that information. It would be a violation to help them.
But the teachers would know of their student. They have a health plan, and that should be shared by the principal for those teachers.
Well, I did IAPs for 13 years. I'm aware of that, but I'm saying the people who need to know, that's what I said, the people who need to know, such as the teachers...
Or even subs that come in.
Absolutely, because sometimes others who needed to know did not know, and it created a problem.
Really, our policy pretty much is what they passed in law that we've had, so is it to be off and stowed away.
Okay, any other discussion?
I make a recommendation that we approve the cell phone policy with the recommended changes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next policy we're reviewing is Policy JBE, truancy. Dr. Ferguson?
Okay, as a former assistant principal, truancy is a huge, huge problem, and our court systems and local truancy officers, they're just so over, you know, just inundated. But if you'll read what this says on truancy, on page one, it's now putting the responsibility back on the parent. Underneath responsibilities of parent and legal guardian, the second sentence says, "The parent or legal guardian of a truant student shall ensure that the student makes up missed schoolwork by attending after-school tutoring sessions, weekend makeup classes, or other remediation opportunities." And until that work is made up, the parent or legal guardian shall also attend meetings at the school on or at least a monthly basis relative to the student's progress until that work is made up. Then in that second paragraph under that, it says, "If there is an issue, the principal should note any concerns that school personnel have relative to a child's school attendance on the back of the Supplemental Security Income, SSI, form that the school receives relative to that child." That's the only changes to that policy, is basically holding the parents accountable.
Right, Melissa.
So, any discussion from the committee on this policy? Okay, and no cards?
I'm sorry, Jennifer, and this is based on an act, Act 387, and again, it's effective as of today.
Okay, so do I have a motion and a second to approve recommended changes?
I also move that we approve the recommended changes.
Thank you, Ms. May. Do I have a second? Ms. West, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next policy we're reviewing is Policy JGCE, child abuse.
Okay, on page one of the child abuse policy, it defines what a mandatory reporter is, and we all know that any teaching or childcare provider is a mandatory reporter. However, they have also added, excuse me, if you'll turn to page two, at the bottom of that first paragraph, the last sentence, or next last sentence, "In addition, any police officer or law enforcement officer who works as a school resource officer shall be considered a mandatory reporter." So, our SROs that are in some of our schools, they are now considered to be a mandatory reporter. If you'll turn on over to page three, it basically changes, page three and page four changes the reporting procedures, there's certain events of child, or cases of child abuse that need to be reported immediately versus those that can just be reported online on the hotline or on the phone number, there's certain ones that need to be reported immediately. Also, it discusses that, of course, no one should be intimidated if they feel like they need to file a report, they should not be persuaded to not file a report if they believe that there is a situation of child abuse. And then on the last page, page six, first sentence, "All of these mandatory reporters, teaching, and childcare providers are required to complete an online training course provided by the Department of Children and Family Services each year." And that's not anything new, I just wanted to call your attention to it.
Okay, so do we have any discussion from the committee?
I was sort of surprised, and I've looked again, and I thought at one time pastors, ministers were included.
They probably are, but they're just not included in this particular, because this only has to do with those that work in the school system.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Do I have a motion and a second to approve the changes?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any comments from the committee members? Our next PRC meeting is tentatively, will be held in September at a date to be determined. We appreciate you, thank you so much for your time serving on our PRC. Remember, we do have a boxed lunch for you guys that's served on PRC in the superintendent conference room.